Um.
We'll talk.
Be quick, I'll be gone.
Good morning, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, July ninth. Like to call the meeting to order. And if you would please stand and join in Reverend Sid's line for our invitation.
Thank you, I just want to take a moment, so shortly after our nation's birthday and take a moment of gratitude that we live in a country of where we can pray openly for our leaders and thank you for the honor for doing so. Jeremiah twenty nine is a chapter scripture that I've been sending my summer series upon and it's a it spoke to me about speaking for you all today because God's people have been exiled into Babylon, like the worst place ever and the territory of their enemies. And the instructions from God is not only how to survive, but how to thrive with people that you have such distinct differences or hate towards. And God's suggestions that we pray for the well being of the leadership of the community which has imprisoned them. And verse seven says, seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you into exile. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper. Let us pray. Lord, we lift our local county commissioners up to you today, strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love and may they work in the best inter- interest and intentions of all the people that they are called to serve, especially those who we may see as enemies. For when they do, all will prosper. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none? Approval of the minutes, did everyone have an opportunity to read the minutes from July second, twenty twenty four? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Rebus?
Oh. Uh, but they have me.
Commissioner Noel?
Okay. I'd like to, uh, we got a little wanky thing here, so bear with me. Uh, last week after a meeting, Commissioner Quinn sent out information to many of the county residents. Information she deemed relevant to her budget and Roden Bridge budget plans. Of course, it had her spin on it stating Alan and I wanted to build a complete uh, one hundred percent build. When I was specifically talking about a single structure and that wasn't mentioned in any of her packet of information, uh, which was a pared down version just to get this thing started. And she also stated, we wanted to use all of the idle funds currently held by the county, which is untrue. This project had been discussed now for months and it was clear that the portion of ARPA funds that were allocated to this and some portions of other accounts were also discussed. It was Casey's flip flop that started a downturn of this project. She has visions of spending all of that ARPA money on special projects which are not named yet. When Alan and I did not agree, she went on into a retaliatory mode to change our minds and sent out her packet. Congratulations, Casey, it worked. After listening to many residents' concerns, I conclude this. People do not want their taxes raised at all. And people do not want us to build a Roden Bridge facility at all. Most have deep seated beliefs that the spending for Roden Bridge should go to roads, not a facility. Of those that agree we need a facility, they cannot see a way to pay for it, especially in the light of a ten mil increase and the board willing to spend four hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a scale house. And now we're in charge of a seven plus million dollar project. So I am changing my position to recommend we scrap the whole idea of a Roden Bridge facility altogether. The financing was barely workable and all of the ARPA money we had earmarked for it, plus other funds which now are being spent earmarked for other projects. And so in two years, we will not have any of that money and still be paying for the ten plus mil increase that we're currently contemplating. Also, the ludicrous plan of doing the grading, fencing and utilities this year should also be stopped. Before we can build, we will have to go to the polls to get a bond approval. And with the current climate of tax increases, it will be most definitely fail. Then we will have the fanciest fenced in sunflower plot in the county. This move will then free up some financial holdings that we still have to help pare down our taxes. The constituents have spoken.
Hey.
Uh, I have a few comments, uh, the Chamber of Commerce is having a ribbon cutting on at Senior Village um, July eleventh at four thirty PM. So if anybody wants to attend that, that would be great. Um, a meet and greet for our new Agriculture and Natural Resource Agent Clarissa Conrad Leers will be July eleventh from five thirty to six thirty PM at the Atchison County Extension Office, two oh one North Broadway, Lancaster, Kansas, six six zero four one. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Epley, um, he worked with KDOT to get the folks that were here last week, the Bardoff, uh, Heavy Hauling and American Corrections, um. It was really great to see that KDOT is going to work with them to get that project going through seventy three highway, um, which is exciting. Um, and then, um, y- yes, I just wanted to say thank you to my constituents for the feedback, um, that I received on the information that I felt was pertinent to put out, um, for their feedback to ensure that I am acting in accordance to the ones that elected me. So um, other than that, that's all the comments that I have, but I do have new business. Um, I have an employee payroll status form, um, for Katie Sparks. She is our Atchison Community Corrections, um, Director, and this is for a COLA that will be effective beginning six thirty twenty four. This is paid by the state. So it's a five percent COLA that is through the state, which would change her pay rate from thirty eight fifty nine to forty dollars and fifty one cents. Do I have a motion to approve, uh, the payroll status form?
Absolutely. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Can I get that?
Oh, sure. I also have, um, a community corrections grant. This is the Community Programs Juvenile Justice Involved Youth Programs Grant, um, that our community corrections director had presented to us, um, this morning that she would like, um, permission to apply for. This elect, this will ask the chair to sign, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair, um, to sign this grant to allow our community corrections director to apply for the funding through uh, Kansas Department of Corrections. Do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Okay, so I also have a purchase order, um, presented by the Roden Bridge Superintendent coming out of Special Highway to Comanche Construction. This is for the bridge deck and rail repair due to the collision damage on the Independence Creek um, bridge M dot zero dash twenty six dot four um, and the amount of forty four thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars and sixty two cents. Um, we have intentions that this will be coming back to us through an insurance claim. However, we must pay our contractor for the work performed and, um, then uh, county councilor is working with the insurance to get that back. So do I have a motion?
The total does.
Forty.
Those are the insurance we'll be paying probably.
The total the insurance company will pay in all is fifty thousand dollars, which was there then their life there. Uh, this particular one is forty four thousand, but there have been some other expenses.
Yeah, we've, we've paid some engineering costs, but we've already exceeded the fifty.
It will exceed fifty thousand. So it will not all be reimbursed.
Will we go after the driver on that for the rest?
Um, I think maybe we would want to go into executive session to discuss that, but sure, from what we had discussed earlier, it's my understanding that we did not. Okay. Come back to stability.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion as presented?
Some of. Say.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Okay, I have one more item of new business. Um, the past couple of weeks, we've been, uh, meeting with the folks at the courts. Um, and Roger has been drawing up some renovation plans for the sixty three thousand dollars that has been, um, allocated from ARPA to help them with that. Um, Roger is to a point of collaboration with all the folks involved, um, and he feels like he has, um, a good solid plan to pass on to Creel Clark and Seaford has been helping us with the courthouse renovations. Um, so he is just seeking our approval to move forward with giving those plans to Creel, Clark and Seaford. Um, do I have a motion to allow that?
I want some discussion on that, because I was thinking about that. We haven't seen the latest. Should we be signing off on something that we haven't seen?
So my, my thing is after we see that how things change, right, up there, as long as he has been the point person to get them in agreeance, we're not changing the dollar figure. So in, in the Creel Clark Seaford will come out of that sixty three that we allocated. I mean, because we kind of left them with going away with, we know your projects are going to exceed this, but you're going to have to prioritize what needs done and we're only given this amount of money. So I'm okay with letting him move forward.
And they're going to. Let's have it just to prove that it's all ADA compliant.
Yeah, you have, yeah, you have to. So the way you explained it to me, that bathroom that has to be altered to be ADA compliant, you have to have an engineer stamp saying, yeah, this is what you're doing. This is why, but.
Regardless of what the plan looks like, so.
Yeah.
And I don't think the plan's going until he's going to email it to everybody. He's here to see it before it actually goes there, I think.
Right, but it's if it's already been stamped, it's kind of like.
No, it'll be a folder, see it before it goes there, I think, is what you're saying.
Oh, before it goes there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if, if we have a look at it before it goes for approval, I'd be for that.
Okay, so you're.
Yeah.
So it's been moved?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, say.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Yeah, if you give that email, if you don't like something, good old Roger, we'll go into the meeting.
Okay, so Memorial Hall RFP discussion and approval. Um, so last Tuesday, we had given direction to put together a Memorial Hall RFP for tuck pointing. Um, our finance director has done that for us, um, and it has given it to us for review. Um, app, he also pointed out this morning that there are two grants that could possibly, um, be utilized for that's those services. Um, so I would look for a motion to, um, table or put on hold that RFP until he has those dates of the Kansas Historical Society, uh, or sorry, the Preservation Grant and then the Kansas Historical Society Grant that's an annual grant for um, preservation of historic buildings, which Memorial Hall is on that. So we want to just wait on that instead of.
Whether we table or just don't act on it anyway. I mean, I don't know who you table or just.
This.
Because it might have to modify it a little bit once he knows what the grants require.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm kind of wanting maybe just kind of put on shelf and wait.
Okay, so we are gonna just.
We should know something within a couple of months, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you'll keep that on your radar and just keep us up to date and we'll move on from that. Okay.
It might be a good idea to stick it on the agenda like in two months, so we have a placeholder. We don't forget.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Okay, um, next on the agenda is ARPA funds discussion.
Whatever you guys want to talk about.
Which I guess we could just add that into ten forty five. Scott's here. Um, if you, you had sent us, um, an ARPA request, if you want to come up, then go over those.
First one in that pack of them, since you, um, was the, uh, and if you want, pass this around to.
Oh, you got it. Thank you.
Uh, as for the data domains that are backup repositories, um, I have three POs in there. Uh, one, first one is if we want to pay for all of ARPA funds. Um, I don't believe that was the initial plan. Uh, I believe the initial plan, um, early this year was IT pace for half, ARPA pace for half.
So you gave, you gave us two different scenarios. This is all in ARPA and then the next is the same project, just half and half.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and can you remind us what this project was, um, the Dell data domains?
So the Dell data domains are for our, uh, backup and replication offsite. So, um, all of our production data for the county gets backed up to this nightly and then replicated offsite to, um, Station One.
And how often will we need to do this?
Um, every five to seven years, um, five is probably the safer route to go. Simply from gone. Um, I think it's been five to six years already with our current set.
So it's due.
Mm-hmm. And that's why it was, I think, or, and this was IC's project this year to do.
So if we do it all with ARPA, does that reduce your budget for the twenty six thousand, six forty for the twenty twenty five?
Uh, no, for twenty twenty four. This is this year's, uh, project, yeah.
And then you would have that to roll over to offset your twenty twenty five budget.
Uh, I couldn't, or, um, I might just roll into the reserve, wanted to. Or, um, I could use it for CIC potentially too.
And then if we were to do it for the fifty three thousand, two eight, two eighty one, then would you start budgeting a fifth of that for the next five years? So that once we got there, like we don't hit all at once.
Right, yeah, right. Um, yeah, something like, yeah, I can keep track of, um, send that aside each year till it, till it's up to renewal again.
And it's a need.
Mm-hmm, like it. You don't want to go too long between your backup repositories, because they start getting out of date and they stop being supported. And then when they stop being supported, you can't get any hardware for them. So if they start failing, you don't have the ability to pull your backups.
So can you explain? If it were to fail this evening, what, what does that mean for the county?
Um, since it's backup, not much.
Okay.
But if we were to have another lightning strike and our, our uh, production data got hit, I would pull that data from these.
Okay.
So.
Which we have done before.
Mm-hmm, uh, we have in April of, was it last year?
Yeah, it was last year sometime.
When we had a, a sand failure where I pulled, yeah, all that back.
Okay.
So when you're talking about building a reserve for each year, but with IT, isn't like every year there's this package of things we need that always costs about the same, that, so I don't know if we really need a reserve, it's, it's just different needs each time, but it switches or backup stuff and batteries or whatever, so.
But I mean, the, I think the, the primary thing or the, the one thing that we would like to do is to have a five year plan so that you can be like, in five years, I need this and six years, I need that, or year after year, just make sure that you're allocating enough funds so that you don't have a spike of.
That's where, that's where I was going with that, yeah. So now there was somewhat of a capital plan outline. Do you have access to that or did you create your own?
Uh, I haven't seen one. I know it was discussed. Um, I can go take another look at, see if I can find it.
His director, he'd shown me some things he had done for long term, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll dive in, see if I can find it.
Yeah. Which might be helpful to start.
Right.
Okay. So we just, oh, they did all art, but we get, that would help us with our budget challenges here at least.
Yes, but yeah, I, I believe so. And, um, I could also put that, uh, current capital outlet that I have uh, towards the CIC server, uh, if we need to do that update sooner than later, if CIC comes back to me and is like, yes, it, it needs to be done this year.
Okay.
Was that, was that your team?
Uh, CIC, no, it's not.
It was previous.
Yeah. I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from them, see if it's actually necessary or not.
Okay, what was the number on that?
Um, it depends on the plan that we go with. It ranges from, uh, six thousand, I think yearly or fifteen thousand set aside for just CIC, but if we do all the county servers, it's something along the lines of, uh, thirty two thousand as a one time fee.
Okay. And that's good for like five years or something?
Uh, five years until you want to start updating again, but you have a lifespan of about ten.
You should have said, that made, that made sense. Cost wise, yeah.
So.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve a purchase order, um, as presented from our, uh, IT director, um, for a two time Dell data domain, sixty four hundred with maintenance and support in the amount of fifty three thousand, two hundred eighty one dollars and ninety four cents, um, to be paid out of ARPA. Do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I don't know if mine are at order, but, uh, the next up would be, uh, the three projects that we have forwarded from the last year or next year. Left.
It might be behind the, sorry, I passed the whole packet. Yep, you're right. It's, it's right here. Oh, and can you sign that? I'll put it in the packet.
It's here, oops.
Didn't want to. Please do the next. That's what's wanted.
Um, so the three product, these are the three projects that we were going to do next year, but in order to, um, reduce our budget for next year, uh, we were going to pull them to this year and use ARPA funds to do that. Um, there are two switches in here, or two, two quotes or switches. Um, my initial estimate was a switch was going to be nine thousand dollars based off of, um, a quote that we got during the lightning strike, um. When I got the quote back, it was drastically lower than I thought, so I asked for three switches to see if we could do uh, three of those switches this year instead, um, because they came in so far into what I thought. But my original estimate was nine thousand, so, uh, three switches were sixty seven hundred dollars, so. I would like to do this, the three one, I know I initially said one, but if we can do three, I think that'd be better.
Okay, so I can disregard the one Cisco ninety two hundred and look at the three.
Correct.
And can you explain what those switches?
So the switches, uh, they are what interconnects, um, these, these specific ones are for like satellite sites like Roden Bridge Transfer Station EMS Building. Um, they have less than twenty computers and printers and endpoints is what we call them to connect in to this, to connect to the network. So this is where all those connect back to. And then they connect to, uh, the county network through this.
Okay.
It's a computer extension cord.
Got it. I like, Scott knows I need it dumbed down, because, yeah, that, the IT piece, I'm like, okay, I need you to bring that to my terms, so, um, okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our IT director um, for three Cisco switches with licensing and maintenance, um, in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred fifty six dollars and thirty three cents was to be paid out of ARPA. So I have a motion to approve.
Some. Say.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nice to see something come in lower than.
What would work as a hundred percent.
Very surprised. Okay, so the next two. There should be one from CDWG and Infinite Cables. Uh, these are the UPS upgrade, uh, this is what happened, what we use when a power outage happens and, um, servers need some power source, so these take over when, when that power goes out and lets them stay running until the generator starts. Um, the first ones for basically the UPSs and the, um, the accessories needed to to connect the servers to it. And then, um, the second one for Mifin cables is power cables that will, um, well, they, they connect to the, the PDUs that the UPSs connect to. So it's basically just power cables and batteries is what these are.
That are a need for
Mm-hmm.
operating arts.
Our, our county service, yes.
Okay. So the optical.
And yeah, the, I mean, if you want to include this one too, um, these are what connects, this is the I was wanting to upgrade our servers from using copper so that they don't conduct electricity, so that we don't run into that same situation of everything is connected over copper and our, for some, somehow our, our, um, core network got hit by lightning and it kind of banned out and killed a lot of things, uh, last year. And so I'd like to isolate, um, our servers and stuff and switches from each other by using fiber optic cable. So there's no, there's no copper connecting, um, even those servers together to kill them.
Okay. So I have, um, a purchase order as presented by the IT director to be paid out of ARPA for two two thousand watt UPS with expansion battery and accessories in the amount of seven thousand, fourteen dollars and fifty eight cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely. Second.
Moved and seconded, I would like discussion, I forgot to ask, on these, what's the lifespan on these? How, I mean?
Um, three to four years, but then you can replace the batteries for a couple hundred dollars, um, and get another two or three years out of them.
Okay. So.
And the current ones, I think are about, I think they're seven years old and I replaced the batteries last year, two years ago, I think.
Okay.
And they were I, I think we got lucky with those, especially after the lightning strike, they, they were still working well, so I think they did their job.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. This purchase order goes, um, candid and hand and was described by our IT director. Uh, with that, these are the power cables, uh, for a hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents to be paid out of ARPA. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, and then the last last purchase order is presented by our IT director, um, this is This is to install fiber optic cable to prevent the lightning strikes, um. That we experienced here recently in the amount of six hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty two cents to be paid out of ARPA, do I have a motion to approve? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
That's it, thank you guys.
So I. I am still in favor and believe that we should move forward, um. With the ARPA allocation, um, for. The grading and the utilities and the fencing, um, at the twenty five acres that we've purchased. Out of, to be paid out of ARPA. So I just, while we're talking about ARPA discussions and allocations.
You'd be doing grading on a facility which would be subject to. Uh, we don't have the financing for, so it would be sitting there until you could get a, a bond passed. So it could be sitting there for years. But you would have to pay the bond. I believe every finance in solution that we've talked about needed to have a, a. Bond pay, uh, a, an election.
So uh, the feedback I've received, everybody knows that there's a need for the Roden Bridge facility.
I acknowledge that. But the, the ability to pay for it. And after a ten, ten mil increase this year, which we will continue, that will be the new norm. If not more increases, people are afraid that we're not gonna be able to pay for it, we're gonna have a ten bill increase this year, we're gonna find. We're gonna, we're gonna drop this down.
Well, and.
It wasn't evident, and it was a blast meeting.
When we discuss, um. The needs of the facility, I mean, most of it was to improve efficiencies. And buying powder and to be able to take advantage of projects when there's asphalt milling, stockpile rock on days when we need to. Put the pipe in a centralized location, I mean, it's a step in the right direction, a huge step in the right direction, in my opinion, um. So I don't think we should. Remove those. I mean, that's a, that's a huge start, and, and that timeline is feasible, I, I believe, if, if we get things going, get the survey done.
If there would have ever been, um. Uh, will to do this, we will, we would have needed to, uh. Basically have a, um, introductory, uh. Plan and put forth, um, a selling, uh, to, to sell this. Well, when you. To sell the idea and, and to the, the county, well, the first information that they've gotten. Is a negative, when you tie it with information talking about a ten mil increase. The first, and, and they, they look at it and say, oh, this is the reason our taxes are going up, we've got a ten mil increase because. We're wanting to build a, a seven million dollar facility, that's the inference they got immediately. And so the negativity that has been focused on it since the uh. Release of your information is overwhelming. And like I say, when the constituents say they don't want taxes raised, and they do not want a road and bridge facility. How are you gonna ignore that? You're the one who champions listening to your constituents.
I appreciate how you take me champion things, but I don't think giving information to the public is a negative and. I just picked up on what you said, that we walked away last Tuesday with a ten mil increase, which was a hundred percent accurate. Everything was a hundred percent accurate, and as far as selling anything, that's the difference, I'm not a salesman. I say what I think and I say what I mean, and I look out for the best interest of my constituents in everything I do. I do believe there's a need for a Roden Bridge facility, I don't believe it needs to be done all at once. I think we can set ourselves up where we can create a plan and look to the future of what that looks like. I don't think it's spending the cash we have.
Again, you have no idea now whether this would ever pass a bond to be able to, to afford it, because there will not be any ARPA money. Left to go towards this, you're talking about uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent out of. Uh, senior village accounts for uh, Memorial Hall, there's less and less money gonna be there, so you're talking about. In two years, you're gonna be bonding even more, you're gonna have to do more of the percentage, you're not gonna have any cash to put towards it.
So first of all, I have never talked about Memorial Hall and Senior Village proceeds, period, at all. Never, that.
That has been in the conversation since day one. No, we've talked about. Yes, we have, yes, we have.
I have never said that I thought Memorial Hall tuck pointing should be taken out of Senior Village.
No, but that was suggested here.
No, but, no, I didn't.
No, I'm talking about the road and bridge, we have talked about using those, uh. Tranches of money minus a contingency, that's been on here, the, since day one, we've talked about that, and the fact that. That you put in your information that, uh, that we're, the treasurer. And the, uh, and Mark has suggested that we do not use those funds at all. It's, it's in your information.
And.
When, when was that been brought to us?
That I was verifying, just so we have this on the record, what I was verifying were the figures. None of this has, this plan doesn't have anything to do with me, but when you start talking about using cash. I think you all need to understand that this isn't cash, this all has to be budgeted. And I think that, that Eric, you have some great points, that these are things that all have to be budgeted. For the future, and then you are looking at a mill increase for every single year, we don't have cash.
It, but those are funds that could be drawn for and planned for, cuz they are sitting there. And when it is, when, when it's put out that we should, can't draw from those.
You can't draw from the CDs, that money is already, that's not cash, like that is already money that is.
Are you saying that, that they can never be used for anything?
They can, okay, so the CDs are like the real money, your budget is like monopoly money.
Correct, I'm talking about, we have the, the proceeds from Senior Village, you're saying we can never use them.
I'm talking about the CDs.
I'm talking about the, the Senior Village.
You have budget, if those things end up being budgeted, then you can.
Yes.
But you have to tie that into your budget, it's not. The word cash is what probably needs to be avoided, because we don't have cash.
Right, but we have other means, we have funds that could be used, and, and no one ever said using all of them. Cuz there's always talking about the contingency.
Right, and that contingency is well below what it needs to be, we need to have at least double what we have in contingency. Because we could have, we could have another lightning strike or something like that, I'm very concerned about that narrow margin the way that it is. We're under three per, under, um, you know.
That's the actual fund contingency fund, but we have, we have too much cash, if we wanted to go to a USDA loan. We've got too much cash, we wouldn't be eligible, so we've got all of this money sitting in the county. That evidently we can't use because it's, it's been forecasted, well, we can't use that because, uh. We, we need it for contingency.
I don't understand what you're saying.
The USDA loan, Mark, am I correct on this? If we applied for it, if we needed funding for a Roden Bridge facility and we use the USDA loan. We couldn't qualify cuz we have too much cash. We have too much money setting in, we would have to spend those funds down before we'd be, we'd be eligible.
We wouldn't be able to spend them, I mean, you wouldn't be able to pay your people, we almost hit that in November last year.
So we, we can't use Senior Village, or we can't use, uh, any of those funds, or they're locked in completely.
It needs to be.
I know it needs to go through the budget process. And I'm not saying that they're, they wouldn't be budgeted, I, who, I don't know where this.
Can't look at the year end cash balance and say, oh, we've got seven million dollars, we don't, because. A lot of that gets got distributed and a lot of that other stuff is all tied to funds, so. Let's take Scott for an example, Scott may, like, we may have cash in the bank right now. But when Scott spends all, you know, two hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year on his budget, that depletes the actual cash.
I'm not talking about that part of, I'm talking about things from Se- Senior Village proceeds, we reinvested in somewhere else.
Then I think you misunderstood what I was, what I was vouching for.
And also misunderstood what I said, because County Treasurer and Finance Director didn't recommend pulling your investments out. That's separate, like, that's not Senior Village proceeds, that's not, they're not the same. It's just the investments that weren't recommended to be pulled out and utilized as cash.
Well, can I just do a clarification while you're here? So we have four CDs.
We have CDs with four banks.
Okay, so it's four banks, there's multiple CDs at the banks, I thought it was four separate CDs, okay, so, and they total right around four million bucks. So how do we get four million dollars set aside? And why can it not be used, why can't it be budgeted, be used for whatever reason?
Because your bank balances don't drive your ability to, to do these projects. It's your funds in the budget, so when you're looking at the budget. You can't look at the cash and say, oh, we've got all this cash sitting over here.
So use the word cash, let's just talk about those CDs.
That's cash.
Okay, that's what we're, we're talking about those, okay. So at any point during the year, do you close any of those out and draw those out to be, be able to operate?
I haven't had to, but if we have any little thing that would happen again, I was this close to having to pull those down in November. Just to pay the bills.
Pull part of one of them.
If we hadn't had ARPA, I would have had to pull.
So my point is, you got an eleven and a half million dollar budget roughly. And we're sitting on four million in CDs, yet I have to raise taxes on somebody, because I mean. I think there's a rationale to say some of that CD money should be utilized, cuz. Some of that money is honestly, we're paying taxes paid by some of your old grandparents. I mean, this money's been sitting there a long time.
You just bought it, you just built a new house, so I assume you did a budget for your new house, right?
Yeah, blew it all to heck.
So when you, when you have that budget. You looked at what you had budgeted, you didn't say, oh, well, I've got this cash over here, you have to look at what you actually budgeted.
Right, sure.
So that money that you're saying is just sitting there, isn't sitting there. It is what's funding our funds that are done through the budget. And there is, there needs to be some contingency, because if we had, you know, Greensburg tornado happens, that happened to our friends, we know those people. We had the lightning strike last year, we had to put a lot of money out, if that had been at a different time of year. It just hit it wrong. You know, last year, we didn't get the tax statements out until almost December, I had a lull, if we hadn't had that ARPA money sitting in the bank. I would have had to pay those.
They were there if you needed.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so, I get it.
But the, but everything that's in our budget is, has the, the cash that matches it.
I think we're cash heavy, I'm sorry, I mean, government's not supposed to operate with a thirty, forty percent reserve like that, I mean. We do need every reserve, we have reserve for our operating budget, let me finish, we have a reserve, they didn't use to, there is a reserve there. So our. Eight percent or something like that? We start that two years ago? Yeah. And we figured that it would take how many years to get that buildup, I mean, we.
We have less than three months of, if, we got leveled by a tornado and our entire county was down.
What happens, then FEMA comes and everything else, I'm not saying we should count on that, I'm just saying there's.
They don't though, they don't right away, you'd have to stand up all sorts of things and send money.
Sitting on four million dollars is, is excessive.
We don't even have three, three months worth of savings in order to operate. That's what you guys should be looking at, that is your responsibility, your fifth party responsibility, to look at that number and say, what happens? Because they're gonna be beaten down my door if the county, you know, the county can't go bankrupt, but we can sure spend all of our money, if we don't have any cash. We can't get loans, what are you gonna go to the bank and ask them to finance, we don't have anything?
I know we're the repository for all the taxes that come in for all the different government agencies, okay? So of the four million dollars in the banks, is any of that school district money or township money or fire district money, that, is that, it's all just county money?
It could be, I mean.
No, at the moment, what is it?
It could be that money, because when we.
So it's all county money, unless you have a crisis.
We are bound to distribute that money, right now, I'll do another distribution in September. So there's some in our cash that is going to be distributed out to the school district, the cities, et cetera, there all, there always is some.
Yeah, but not in the CDs, they're your backup.
They're part of our entire picture, I think you're trying to compartmentalize, and that's not.
You do compartmentalize when you're talking about budgets, everything has a ledger and account, you know where it's going.
I'm talking about the real money, the real money ties into that budget, it does, it's not piecemealed, like. You can't say this C D at Bank of Agastan is for the Roden Bridge, you can't say this one is the holding.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying it's. So we have a C D that belongs to the school district?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, whose money is, it's all taxpayers' money to start with.
That's what I'm saying, you're not understanding, it is.
I think I do.
You cannot just use it to, to pay what you want, because you have to go off the budget and with the funds, the funds drive it all.
So we budgeted, say a million dollars of that for some reason next year, even to reduce taxes. Once it's budgeted, we cash it, it's in the budget, we spend it. Okay.
And then if we have like. Ten dollars left in the bank, then.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's gonna see that happen. There's a balance between this, I understand that. Isn't this worrisome, the fact that we have to come? And talk about this now, we're this far into our budget process, we are this far into a road and bridge possible. Scenario, uh, and that's when I read. Information that's coming from one commissioner that is sent out, and it's like, I never heard that. There was never a briefing to, to me, was there to you, have you never heard? No, there was, there was never anything like that, so now it's up to us to decipher it in this meeting, we never, I'm. We had never had an update that there was, um, uh. Ex, how does that quote go, when you get that right there?
Yeah, yeah.
That there's, um, that they recommend that we not use, I mean, what's like. Where is this coming from, we've never had anybody say that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll explain where it's.
It, it, it should have been, it should have been to us as a commission.
So the difference is, I, you guys can tell me who I can and can't put on an email internally of the county. But I can communicate with my constituents and give them information anytime I want, that's, I'm elected by the people. And I need the people when I'm feeling like, maybe I'm seeing something wrong, like, we've been through this for, for months now, since our initial workshop with B M G. Where it came up with three million dollars, that's over our two million, that was when I'm like, okay, like. I think this is not, we shouldn't take all the two million that we set aside and put toward that. And I've said that every meeting for weeks and weeks and weeks.
Same time, we talked about using Senior Village proceeds and other things, and now you say you don't, you're never any part of it.
Well, because, so, here's, here's the thing, right, like.
Where'd that go? I mean, how could you not hear that when you're talking about weeks and weeks of the, you're talking about one thing and you weren't present when we were talking about?
I've been present every week, and when I go to my constituents after last week, I mean. It was happening or not, and people, you know what their response was? I don't have time to watch a four and a half or six and a half hour meeting, Casey, you gotta put information down. On paper so we can see it, and guess what I did? I sat on my couch until eleven o'clock last Tuesday, I created this information. And I'll be darned if I'm ever gonna put out county financials without going to the people that do it every day and saying. Are these numbers right, like, these are the notes that I have all over the place, this is what I got, like, is this correct? So, yes, Wednesday, I made sure that information I'm giving my constituents was correct. And when, in those discussions, it was not recommended to pull the investments out. I was even told I could contact Scott Lloyd for a second opinion, I don't need to contact anyone, I trust the people in place. That are telling me, do, I don't recommend pulling these investments out, like. So that's why I put it on here, every single thing that I put out is information that we've been talking about in our meetings.
Minus what you didn't want to be put, that's part of it.
It's more, more was admitted, I mean, there's more.
So what, what?
I'm not gonna get into.
Why would I to?
I'm just saying, it seems like if I'm trying to sell somebody something or present something, I may not, I may leave something out, maybe not lie, just not tell them everything. And I feel like there's a lot more than gone over on this whole process that you didn't outline, you didn't go. You can't do it in one Facebook post, you're gonna need.
I didn't do any Facebook.
It was an email that got put on Facebook.
Well, that's not my problem, like.
Which I don't care, I really don't care.
If I'm getting, um. Looked down upon for giving information that was deemed to be accurate, I made sure, hey. Is is this accurate, is this where we look financially as the county?
It's accurate based on the opinion you got, I I disagreed with the treasurer's opinion on part of that, I totally agree we should have reserve and have contingency.
In, in last year.
Four million in CDs, one point six in the national senior village money, I think roughly. And, um. On top of that, which is a different sales tax, but it's growing, so I mean. There's a lot of money that I think belongs to the taxpayers, instead of raising their taxes, we should spend some of that money. Regardless of it's a road and bridge facility or roads or whatever it's for.
And again, when you tie those, the first. Of anything, the introductory to a road and bridge facility. That's unless they've been following closely and watching our meetings, is the first thing that they got sent out in their reading. Is tied with the possibility of a ten mil increase, that's the first likely conclusion is. That's the reason our taxes are going up. It's, it's a negative response and it's visceral. And then they're even more, they're amazed that there is no road and bridge, uh, facility, uh, money. That's causing the ten mil increase.
Right, that, I mean, that's, those are all the things I've been concerned about.
Doesn't make it even worse, but.
Things I've been concerned about.
If we were a a public business and we had the shortfall, we are, we'd have layoffs.
Well.
If you're a publicly held company and you put that out, our stock would have dropped, without reason.
Well, but we're not publicly held, we're, we're a public entity, it's the taxpayers' money and information. We, we said last year, we wanted a ten percent overall general county reserve fund, right?
I pushed for that.
I, I, and I agree with you a hundred percent.
We also said it would take years to get there.
We've, well, but guess what, we don't need years to get there because we sold Cedar Village. And we can use that for our reserve because we've cut every department's budget, all of it, everything, down to lean, everybody. If you were a department, you know to forecast for the moments that you're not expecting, you had emergency buffers. We've went through each one of our departments and cut all of it, there's nothing left to where. If we have that moment tonight. We have three hundred and forty thousand in our reserve. We don't have the ten percent of an overall county budget like we wanted to, so that's why I just. I think that your senior village proceeds need to be to make up that. Reserve.
It's the first time you've said that, and I disagree with that necessarily in the big picture.
I, I don't either, but it also makes it quite obvious that we can't afford a facility.
Well, and so to to that that point, we've been getting emails and information since like April, May. You know, so that's what I had to do on Tuesday, is sit down and go through all the emails, write down the figures. And put it all in front of me so that, because honestly, I left last Tuesday going. I'm missing something, like.
That's right.
If you think about it.
I don't, like, I honestly felt that way, and then when you put it on paper, it's like, I'm not missing anything, this is not a good, not a good time right now. It's just, it's not.
I do believe one thing we could look at is, if you look at the. Uh, the CDs, every part of that and the ARPA money. That you can get a lot of the road bridge facility done without any ad-harm tax money, without borrowing any money. And then things can be phased in over the next several years.
Those CDs are, that's cash, that is, you have to.
They have to budget for next year.
Have to, but yeah, and then where's our contingency? So like.
Well, you're gonna have two million left contingency in CDs, and you're gonna have one point six million from this, you've got three point six million still sitting there.
Let me use an example that you're familiar with, when you were, when you were in dentistry and you owned your own business.
Private business and.
Absolutely, we need to run this like it's a business.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Then we ought to start layoffs, because if we would be in this kind of shape. And we need to cut budget. And we're not cutting budget.
And that's.
And that's, that's part of my problem is the fact that we are still. As, as last week, I was talking about cutting and it, and it was no, no, no.
You were talking about cutting roads from a road plan and I'm no, 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 because we finally are getting ourselves to where we're making a difference from all the.
That's, I didn't say that we would, that was the only thing, I said I would be willing to look at that. In the grasp of of cutting the whole budget. And you see, again, you take one thing that I say and you make that the the thing that, oh, that's Eric's for cutting roads and he's gonna cut all the road problems. Uh, projects out of the budget, that's not what I said, you're selectively, you selectively put things in your. Uh, your packet or whatever you wanna call it, and you leave things out, you omit things that you don't want. It's, it's like I said, you, uh, use. Putting this out and you want pressure on on people that you disagree with. But then you will ignore the same people if they come to the same conclusion I do. And that is, they don't want a road and bridge facility.
So let's just talk through, let's talk through that. Um, the first page that I put out was our twenty twenty five budget as of last Tuesday. What, what on that information did I, did I leave out? Or that is not, is not accurate.
The, the numbers you put there are accurate, I'm not saying.
So page two, when, when we talk about senior village proceeds and the sales tax fund. How much debt we have with our bridge bond, our road bond and our road and bridge equipment we purchased. And then our, where our reserve is, what information is in our investments? What information did I leave out that that I'm missing here or isn't true?
I didn't, I never did say that the figures are wrong, but you only.
So what, so what is, what is there, and then the next one is. My opinion of what we should utilize for for ARPA road and bridge to get our project by the land, do the utilities, the grading and fence it off. And then reassess where we're at, with what, and then also look at the values of the assets we own, such as the county lake, recycle building. And such, like, what, what is it, this is, this is my opinion, so, I mean, this is, and I, I stated that, like. My email to my constituents was asking for their feedback to me, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
And then the, it's, at least the copy I had was already pre-filled out, you had one question on there.
Hundred percent, that's my opinion on behalf of my taxpayers, I don't think we should do it right now.
Yeah, I bet, so it's, it's like you have a questionnaire which is pre-answered.
No, a hundred percent, that's, that's my answer and I need them to challenge.
Yeah.
Challenge me if the citizens say differently.
If you're sending out something there and wanting their opinion, that's not, that's not your goal, you've already given your, yours, you've already made your opinion. You said you wanted them to inform you, but you've already got your opinion down on that paper, it's already pre, you didn't need. To send it out because you already got your opinion made.
A hundred percent in the.
Okay, I rest my case.
With the best interest of my taxpayers in mind, that's.
Why ask your opinion if you don't want it, you've already made up your mind. You're contradicting yourself.
No, it's great, because I got so many opinions and everybody's aligned.
Okay, all living in that head of yours?
No, I don't know why you have to be so evil and like, and act like this, but. I'm sorry, I represent district.
This has been brewing for a long time, because. There's been other issues that you have, uh, acted the same way and same MO. And, uh, and so.
Of giving people information that you deemed to be accurate. I mean, I don't understand what the problem is with giving the public information.
Okay, you two, let's move forward here.
I mean, that's what we're supposed to do, we're elected by the people and we represent the people and it's not my money, it's, it's your money.
And see, you, you wanted me to listen and I, and I did, and the people that told me, they don't want it. But you are willing to go ahead and 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 go ahead and do it, even though. You wanted me to act on their, uh.
I want you to act as your elected official of your people, I don't want you to do it, we don't coincide with one another, I'm elected by my district. And the constituents.
And so that's the reason you contacted a lot of people in my district with your information, in mine. So if you're only acting on the people there that's your voters, why send it out and call people and put it out to mine?
So my district shared it with yours, I heard about you.
No, you directly called people in my district.
I was on a walk. You wanna keep it, sorry, yeah, no, I appreciate you, thank you for keeping me. So I'm sorry if you don't want information given, like, how do I give information to District Three only? And please don't share it with anybody else in our county.
And don't call people in other districts.
Okay, so I guess.
And don't lie about it.
I'd say as a taxpayer, that's not a good idea.
Yeah, right?
I mean.
Now we've divided the, the county three ways.
No, she's saying one thing and then she's, and when I counteracted her.
You counteracted with, you know, she can't talk to people in your district, you can't talk to people first.
Okay, so it's eleven o'clock, um, we're gonna move on to Taylor Lee Extension Council Quarterly Update. Welcome.
You just want us.
We might be safer back there, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
All right, so this is Clarissa and I'll let her talk a little bit about herself in a couple minutes. Um, we have some packages of just different things we have going on and update. Clarissa attached her business card, um, some programs that we have planned, um. So she started as a part-time agent, um, or as a part-time employee on April fifteenth. Um, which was, I think, a week or two after the last time I was here. With our budget, budget presentation, um, she began full-time after her wedding on June twenty third. And, um, she's just kinda hit the ground running from there, so I'll let her introduce herself and kinda talk a little bit about her background.
So I'm Clarissa, I'm originally from the North Texas Dallas Metroplex, I. Grew up in four H, which, you know, Dallas, you, you wanna think of agriculture, but from there I went down to Texas A and M where I got a degree. In environmental soil and crop sciences with an emphasis in crop breeding and genetics. Uh, then I moved up to Dallas for a short period of time where I was a volunteer for the four H and worked in an animal disease diagnostic laboratory. And then I decided to come up to K-State for my masters, where I worked three years in a comparative. Livestock program where I worked across multiple species and nutrition, I also coached the K-State horse judging team during my time. Now, the last two years, um. My then boyfriend, but now husband moved to Ohio for a job, so I moved with him and. Kinda worked some interesting jobs from working at the zoo, uh, in a grant-funded program, all the way to teaching horseback riding lessons. And now we're back, I moved back about mid-March and once again started part-time April fifteenth, I'm very excited to hit the ground running. I have a lot of fun programs planned for the kids prior to their county fair. And hopefully after trainings, um, for the next year, I'm ready to hit the ground running with programs for the community as well.
So she's kind of. She's experiencing everything that I experienced as I started as a, as a agent, so you have a year-long training program. And I just finished up my new agent orientation on May ninth, um, so I, um, am done with all of my new agent orientation. Um, we've planned and implemented, um, some different programs, um, that we've shared throughout the community. Um, the last time I've seen her, I shared a little bit about Walk Kansas, we had eighty participants that logged. Ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ten minutes of walking slash running time, which I thought was great, which averages to be about, um. Nineteen minutes per day. Per participant. Of walking time. Um, and then we've had a lot of youth programs throughout the summer that we collaborated with the interns from Brown County for, so we had. Um, a STEM workshop, a babysitting clinic. Where they learned the ages and stages of development and activities that they could do with the kids that they babysat. Um, we've had a food stay camp, a fiber arts day camp, a photography day camp. Um, and out of those, we had sixty-four total attendees and. Twenty-four of those attendees were not currently enrolled in four H, which we thought was good that we're reaching the, the larger community. Um, and then Clarissa, she's been employed. I think full-time a couple weeks, but she already has some fun things planned, so she has, um, meet a horse day, which I'll let you talk about a little bit.
So the American Horse Council has generally two to three holidays a year. That they try to promote the industry because the industry as an all agricultural, they're starting to decline in numbers. So they promote this thing, uh, called Meet a Horse Day, it happens every year on July seventeenth. And so I thought I would collab with the Kansas Horse Council to make this program happen, so that's gonna be my first program. Uh, that's next week, so I have, I'll be bringing two of my personal horses plus two horses from one of the kids in the county. Where people from the community come meet horses, see what it takes to take care of it, uh, we'll have a four H booth to get them. You know, that there's much more in agriculture if they're interested in that, um, as well as obviously the static projects. Then this weekend, I actually have a livestock showmanship clinic for our four H kids so that they can learn. From county professionals, uh. How to show their animals correctly, whether it's pig, cattle, goats or sheep, so I think that will be a good head start for the county fair. I did have a horsemanship clinic planned a couple weeks ago, but we did get rained out, so I did postpone that to the weekend right before county fair. Same thing, but for our horse kiddos.
So you're, you're encouraged by K-State to learn and observe and go to different counties, but because of her experience and, um. Like livestock and horses, she was already able and had the resources to provide some things to the county, so she's planned some great things ahead. Um, so then we've also looked, we noticed that there was a decline within our four H program. Um, with. Older kids in high school, so we've looked for different ways to develop leaders, so. Um, we've granted three recipients for each scholarships, so we're hoping that we can start promoting those scholarships that they can receive to help with the post. Secondary education, um, and then we also hired a part-time employee. Um, to kinda help with different off, office updates, so, um, that is also a four H member. And she's been a great asset to us, our county website. For extension was a little bit of a mess, so she's been doing updates with that, just so it's a more dependable source for people to find information.
Awesome.
And then, where are you gonna?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so then, um. We love it when kids come to us and wanna do something within leadership, um, to kind of grow skills in that aspect, so we had a kid who wanted to. Lead a show pic clinic, um, which he had a good, um, reception, he had good reception from that as well. Um. And then, right now, we're just gearing up for the county fair. We are hoping we have more entries than we did last year, I'm hoping we have more people from the community come as well. So we have, um. Fair officially, pre-fair event starts July thirtieth, so we have fashion review for our four H members that day. Um, August fifth and sixth, our static entries will be judged and then they will be on display when the fair starts August seventh through the tenth. So we would love for you all to come out and see what all we have going on.
Awesome. So with everything you've done so far, where are you at with like your year-to-date budget of? Because I know that you had asked when you came to us for the twenty twenty five allocation, so it sounds like you're, you have all these great things going on.
Right.
Um, and I'm just curious where you are year-to-date and then, um. If you can continue all of that on with, with what we allocated you this year for next year.
So just with, um, the absence of agent salaries, we, um. We still have about sixty percent of our budget. Um. From twenty twenty four.
Okay. That's, you guys are conservative, but yet doing all of these things.
Yeah, so we, we, and another thing we're doing is, we participate in match day, which has been great for us to. Um, get funds for the different programs we wanna do, so we're kinda tapping into those funds to. Provide any resources we need to provide programs for youth, so.
How much did you get next day?
We received a little over twenty-three hundred last year. Yep, yep. So we're participating in that again, which happens a couple weeks after fair, I think, so, well, we don't a lot of promotion for that. Um, and then. We're just doing a lot of planning for the future, like I said, last time I came, we're planning for school enrichment offerings that we can provide to. All the schools in the county, um, I'm planning on doing a program for aging adults called Stay Strong, Stay Healthy. Um, which is a weightlifting program to hopefully. Um, which is a weightlifting program to hopefully help, um, older adults stay in their homes longer. And, um, Clarissa's working with an agent in Meadowlark District to, um. Provide a master gardening program to hopefully get some trained master gardeners in the county.
So the goal is to partner with this first year with Meadowlark, just because they already have an established program, but also they have. An individual agent who this is essentially her only. Program she does. That way I can, we can have a couple of our county residents. Do the program, but then I can kind of watch it so that next year we'll be able to promote it in our county or our county. So this is just kind of more of a learning experience on my end.
So do you feel like twenty twenty-five, you guys can keep the momentum up with the twenty twenty-four budget? With your reserves, um, if you're not. Given that increase that you asked for. I'm just trying to get a handle because we're, today's our day, right?
I know.
Of like figuring out what we're sending out, um, to taxpayers, uh, for. The R and R notices. And so although you're not in our general budget, you're a line item. So I'm just curious. Where you're at, because. It's exciting. I see where we've been and where we're going, right?
Right.
And so I'm just curious, uh, adult.
We weren't surprised by not receiving an increase. I think that we, we know that we have. To show you our growth for, to receive more funds. So we understand the reasoning. Um, it would be helpful to have. More funds, but we obviously understand.
But it won't be detrimental to anything to go twenty twenty-five with the same as twenty twenty-four.
No, we're, and we're meeting as with our budget committee just to fix the numbers that we had figured out, figured out originally. So.
That makes me feel better.
Next year, you're probably gonna need some.
Right, right.
So it's something you kind of be aware.
No, absolutely. I just, I hate to. To not. To see it going, right? It's kind of like what Community Corrections is experiencing, like they're.
Yep.
The, the need and and they're doing great. And then you don't get the program. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to kill anything budgetarily that that you're. That you're doing. So but also I'd love to hear that you're sixty percent of it and you're being cognizant of it and, you know, conservative that you can get by. You know, and then we can reevaluate.
Right. I'm excited. This is the future right here.
A hundred percent.
This is great.
Yeah. And I'm excited. The community is going to be excited for some of the new things you guys are putting together and that they haven't. Haven't had an opportunity to.
Yeah.
To do. So let us know if there's anything we can help promote. And and that.
All you kids that showed up that were in four H, did any of them join four H?
We've had quite a few calls the last couple of weeks, just, hey, we saw this promoted on Facebook, like. Not even really understanding what four H all entailed, but wanting to know how they can get involved. So, um.
About adults, same with adults.
Uh, not as many adults, but hopefully we'll get more volunteers.
Parents follow.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yep, and then.
Reading your profile, this is gonna be a weird question, but how do you pronounce your cat's name?
Elphaba.
Elphaba.
From the Broadway show Wicked.
Sorry, this is, I know it's off the wall.
You might, you might cut budget expense.
I know. We had a conversation. I said I could go, I could be. I'm like, I could be professional and do color, or I could make it a joke and go in with black and white, say, I remember your comment from last. Um, and then. We do have a meet and greet. I know, um, you saw it on Facebook, but, um, for Clarissa on Thursday. So it'd be good.
It's really nice.
What's Tom?
So Thursday from five thirty to six thirty, it's a come and go. We'll have light refreshments at the office.
At the office.
Mm-hmm.
Why should you go? Because if you're, if you're having a bad day and you're kind of dragging, you walk into that office and you're so welcoming itself.
Yeah, thank you. Thank. Our office professional Trish does a good job.
That's awesome. She always has a smile on her face when you walk in.
Well, thank you. We don't want to make up too much of your times.
Thank you.
By eleven fifteen, we have Roger Denton, GIS, um, with the road policy concerning adding roads to Ashington County roadmap and Rollins Road. Bridge removal presentation.
I think our, uh. This is actually being brought to the commission at the request of the commission. But it had to do with.
Um.
Did you request it? But we did, we were at the meeting. Bring it back.
I was asked, we had, we, we had a statement that said what it is that was going on and we were asked to put it in a policy format and bring it back.
Okay, yeah, I, I just don't remember that conversation.
I, the problem that we have is right now, when people come in to talk. Uh. It's like mom and dad. They talk to us. If they don't hear what they want, they come to you. And when they come to you, we're wrong. And and so, uh, what we want to be able to do, I do not like. When we can't tell people. Exactly what it is they need to do to get where they want to go. And so our problem is, we just recently had an issue where. We told the person, but we have to tell the person, we don't know because we don't have a policy of any sort. So this is just what we do. So we have tried to put into policy book, into a format that we think would work. Currently, all we do is step one and two. We don't classify anything. We don't tell them. We don't actually. Put it on your agenda and bring it back. We just basically, uh, look at the road and we question the road. We. Research it and then we try and figure out where it might go from there. Uh, all this does is try and put it into a format. So that we're on the same page. We work for you. And if it's not what you want us to do, tell us what you want us to do.
The truth is putting into words what you're, what the, what you've been doing anyway to do the process. This way the public knows what the process is.
Essentially, but the only two steps that are for sure that we do right now are one and two. We don't necessarily classify anything. We can bring it to you and you can say, hey. Uh, we don't agree with where this is. That's fine. We were just going to try and tell you because a lot of times what we do. Is we re- research roads and then we find, uh, that maybe they do have good standing. But they haven't been used for twenty years or fifty years or however long. Or maybe they don't have any standing. And then we're saying, how do we make this? Because they may have been used at some point in some manner. Uh, but they may have no legal standing whatsoever, or they may have, just like one that we just recently went through where. We think it might have been a session road. There are no records creating it, but. Uh. We do know that it has had some historic use and there are still things that needed to be fixed. And so. We, our, our goal is to research, find those things and bring them back to you. Uh, well, not necessarily bring them back to you, but if the people say, yeah, we want to proceed with this, then it should come to you for determination on. Whether it should go on the map and what it would take to get it on the map. And so many people think all we have to do is walk in here and say. Oh, yeah, county commission can declare that a road. Uh, that's not actually how roads occur. If it has been and you can find that it is a road, then you might be able to do that. Um, but if not, they don't get a road just by coming into you and saying, hey, we want a road. Just like you went through earlier with, uh, a taking. You, you discussed, you know, eminent domain, which is a taking. Well, roads are takings also and and those, if you put one in where there wasn't one before, you can be. Uh, deemed to be taking something. So our goal is just to set up a procedure which we can follow that you're in favor of that says. Here's how we get from where we are to where someone else may want to be. And, uh. It all comes through your hands to do that.
Couple of things. First of all, I know we haven't adopted the policy, but you guys, you've been following it based on. The information you sent us for today and I, it's incredible. Like, that's, this is what we need to do when you can send the sheet. Of what, why, and then all the backup behind it that explains, here's the road records. Like, everybody has visibility on. Why, right? So it's easier for us to make that determination of. What needs to be done because it's right here for us. So, um, and I appreciate you writing this policy for us as well. Um. I am at complete in favor of of putting a policy together. I was hoping I. Kind of streamlined what you put together for us, um, in just a little more specific simplicity. Because a lot of this is like. It make, it, it all makes sense. I just think for a policy more, um. Specific. And so I wanted your feedback on that, uh, to see if, if you think that's.
I would do a direct comparison and and just see what it is that, you know, we've.
I used everything you did.
And you probably have it all there. I'm not trying to make it more complicated. Uh, I'm really not. I just tried to put all those pieces in. If that's. If that's the case, I don't want to do a comparison here right now and just say, oh, yeah, this is good.
No, I did.
Uh, but.
I would love to.
But if they've looked at it and think that's good, we'll work with whatever you send our direction. You actually ended up with three copies of this because I sent you a copy when I sent this out.
Mm-hmm.
And that one was one that's come to us. And and I know you're going to think. Now, how often does this occur? I'm going to tell you, it happens twenty, thirty times a year. It's not like it doesn't happen very often. We get a lot of these inquiries. Now, I will say, half of them have no legal standing whatsoever. Uh, we get a lot of people who just come in because they've got a field drive and we've got. You know, a guy says, I remember when that field drive was used by the people down there. Uh, we do get a lot of those, but we sent you one. That a lot of people would think, well, that's a road, two sixty-second. And we did the research on it. I sent it out because it makes it very easy to see. We can go back into the, we researched not only road records. But there's agaba stuff we look at, as you can now see. And and we look at, where was it on the maps in eighteen ninety-three, in nineteen oh. Whatever. I mean, we've got all these things that we look at to try and determine where it was. And in that case. It didn't show up until about nineteen sixty-five. And when it did, then we were able to go look at the deeds and find. That easements were granted for those deeds when those deeds were created. By putting that on the informational sheets, then in the future, when somebody comes in and asks about it. We will be able to just pull up those informational sheets, read the notes and say, oh, yeah, here's what happened. Uh, and and that's one, I don't think it will come to you because it's obviously a private road. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
But the other two, we sent your direction and sometimes get quite, quite involved and cumbersome.
Well, and I just think it's good for the board to be aware of what's going on because then it's not something that. It seems like that like the last one started in September and then found, you know, come. Made aware of it in March and and by then, it's just nice to have a heads up so that. We have the information too, right? So we know this is being done, this is being researched and. We don't have to be involved until you send us that you need us to be involved. It's more of a heads up so that we know what's going on because. As a commissioner.
Or it can be more consistent. If this is what you want. Then this is, this is how we do it. And then if, if something happens along the line, no, this is how we do it. So that. I'm including myself in the conversation, but this way Roger and I. Know exactly what's expected of us.
You have direction.
We have direction.
I'd say it also gives the consumer the.
Yes.
Handle that requires. Those, and that's why I think I haven't read yours and analyzed it, but I like yours because it. There's a lot of steps here, so to speak, or detail. Which some of them may be pretty inquisitive and they may want to. Get into some nitty-gritty and you've got a little more information on this, I think, at this point. That is when you can't review this thing once a year and. See how it's working. Do we need to? You know, get rid of a point or add a point.
I don't have a problem either way. I just want to know what to do.
Well, I appreciate you writing our policy for us, but I would like if you guys would review what I altered. I mean, I used your da- data. And just shrunk it down into more of a, a policy versus. So. If you just consider.
How is that more of a policy or?
I mean.
It's a beauty format thing or something. I mean, because you had shared this.
Yeah, I mean, I just you used what he gave us and made it more specific of.
I would probably go with what Roger recommended.
I, I would. I mean, I, I'm fine with that. And like I say, over the course of a year, some, there's some alterations. It's another story.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would accept the policy submitted by, um. GIS and the Appraiser's Office, uh, and the forum with his attachment.
One second.
Okay, it's been moving a second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say aye. Aye, passes two to one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Next, we're doing. Just the rawest road.
Yes.
Jack's going to actually do the presentation. He did the research work on this and I'm going to have him present it for you. And do you have an illustration of that area? Oh, I don't need it. Works out how we should can look at. I think his illustration, he explained most of it, I think.
Come on up.
What are you doing first?
Rollins. Just send that to us already.
It's your email. It's your email. I was trying to find it.
Yes.
I'm looking at it.
So I was asked to research a segment of county road beginning at three-tenth that runs south. A half mile long section line to the center of the section along Deer Creek. In the top right corner there, you see section twenty-three with the green highlighted parcel. Rollins Road running down the middle of that section is what I'm referring to.
It's this right down through here.
So as Roger mentioned, we've been working. Kind of on the assumption that there's the three kinds of roads, the very obviously open roads, the very obviously closed roads and. Roads that fall somewhere in between. Of course, this is one of those roads that fall somewhere in between. So. The Board of County Commission minutes show that, uh, two miles of road. Between the south line of section twenty-six, which is Harper Drive. And the north line of section twenty-three and three-tenth road. Was petitioned for in eighteen eighty-two and ordered opened in eighteen eighty-three. The commission minutes book F and road book C are the only record I was able to find on that. It. Has legal standing as a county road. A petition was filed in eighteen eighty-four to vacate the road. That petition was rejected by the board at the time. Those records are on file with road record three fifty-one. The road appears on all of our historical plat maps for eighteen eighty-nine, nineteen oh three and nineteen twenty-five. All the way through sections twenty-three and twenty-six unbroken. In nineteen forty-nine, only the north three-eighths mile in section twenty-three was shown. Sometime between nineteen forty-nine and nineteen eighty-six, the right-of-way was removed from the map entirely. It doesn't appear on any parcel maps from that time. Until twenty-ten. Right-of-way corrections were processed as map changes twenty-eleven. Sixty-two and sixty-three, which restored the north half mile of right-of-way between Schlesbom and what is highlighted as Bunts. With the bridge included. In twenty-nineteen. County Road and Bridge had plans prepared for a low-water crossing to replace the bridge twenty-three nine M six. But the estimates for construction were expensive enough. That the Board of County Commissioners removed it from their project list. It was two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars at that time. The board did not deem it a reasonable and prudent investment. In this year, the bridge across Deer Creek was removed, changing the access to parcel four oh six, which is the green highlighted. Parcel on the map. So these are all the records currently held by the county. And we're. Want to know how do you as a commissioner want to move forward on this?
I've got a question. You said that that by the removal, it changed access. When affected, it has been closed for a long time. I mean, is that just a technical term?
No, you're.
Changed access or?
No, I think actually you're right in that when the bridge was closed, it. They, they blocked the access.
Because, yeah, I think you said removal, which I, I, I did.
I mean, when it was physically removed, it changed it more, but when it was closed, that's when. That's when they were un- unable to access from that way.
Couldn't find any record of why the right-of-way was removed for all those years and then showed back up. That's, that's crazy, isn't it?
Sometimes we can look at the assessors. Uh, the appraiser, excuse me, Kansas. We can look at the appraisers' road records or, uh, we can look at the appraisers' map changes. And it sometimes tells us why they did what they did, but, uh, it is tough always finding those. And a lot of times. Things disappear. I mean, we're talking, it was on there in twenty-three and it was off of there in forty. Something. Well, that, that predates me. And, uh, and so as I always say, we can only, we only know what we know and we don't know what we don't know. And, uh. We don't know what happened there, but obviously you can see the two waterways that cross. Uh, that section of Rollins, of Rollins. Uh, that section of Rollin- of Rollins Road and uh. There probably was another bridge further south. Uh, and it obviously isn't there anymore. So it's been, you know, seventy years or so since it's, since it's gone through there.
Could be closer to a hundred. Like I said, the last time it was seen on the maps was nineteen twenty-five. But we don't know when it was changed between there.
The rest of three hundred and ten is still open too, coming over from Rollin. Going west.
Yes.
They don't with this map?
No, the, on the email. Well, the email with the data packet I thought would be yesterday or today.
Yesterday?
Monday at one twenty-three.
I said, I think Joe sent that out. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was forward to you.
Yes, I got it.
We found it.
Yeah, okay. I, I went back too far. I was thinking it was last week when I saw it. Thank you.
So the, the road established that you started out with in eighteen eighty-three, that would be Grandeur continuing north. And then going east over to Rollins?
No, it would be North Seventeenth Street. From Harper Drive, all the way up, straight north. Well, I say straight north, the actual surveyed. Road had curves and. Changes to it because of the creeks and hills, but essentially a straight north.
And that's township wrote that in.
On the.
Comes from the south. I know that, that it got figured out a few years ago. That's township maintains that.
Correct.
There's a curve in the road you're talking about on three ten. That bridge is not set straight with the line. Um, you guys probably know the vision. See that, but if you look from the hill going north, that's. Oh God, you can see a little bit on the map.
It does show a little comment on the map there also.
Oh, coming south on Rollins, you mean? There, there is a Joe. Of course, when I'm saying straight here, I mean, it, it is not as extremely. Changed as say Pawnee rode off to the left with the big curve. It's follows this section line more closely.
So how do the Fishers currently access that? Highlighted property. Um, because our bridge is out on Rollins and Grandeur doesn't show going north.
At the moment, I'm not sure how.
That'd be a question for the Fishers.
That, yeah.
Currently, we go through Jerry Foxland, which is to the west and the north. But that is only because he's allowing us to do so. If that property sells, I don't know what the next owner is going to do. So we're pretty much landlocked if we don't have that access.
Okay, Mr. Sosman.
So if you recall, I was in here about six and a half months ago and I spoke about the uh, access to the property that I um, south of Deer Creek. Um, if you recall, I did say that I was using that bridge, um, I'll go grab a pickup, four-wheelers, you know, whatever, across it, um. Until eventually the hole became too big to even pass a four-wheeler over it. Um, hence my, I mean, to you guys and presenting what I had. Um, so for part of my property, I'm in the same thing. The only way to access the property on the south. Side is literally put boots, hip waders on and visibly try to walk or swim across the creek if it's up. Um, so my, my access changed um, with the removal of, of that bridge as well.
But that bridge has been closed since when? Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
I know it was open in sixteen, seventeen or nineteen.
Was it closed and then reopened and then closed again? Cause uh, I remember it had been, was closed shortly after. At least for a while, shortly after I became commissioner in fifteen. And uh, maybe that was a temporary, it could have been a, oh, work order. Cause I remember I was down there. First time I was at, physically at the bridge, it was closed, so.
Well, I know, you know, like, like he said it in nineteen, late eighteen, early nineteen, they came up with a plan to actually um. Put tubes across there. Um, at that time, I'm. Hundred percent sure it's still accessible with F three fifty. Um, regardless, if you guys had it closing here, there wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot out there to, to stop people going across the uh. I wasn't where it's closed. And I know I was crossing it much later than nineteen and people that uh. That also used my land was crossing it much later than nineteen. Uh, regardless of what your, your records show, I know what was physically happening.
So it was actually closed then, but people were still accessing it, Joe? Is that what happened?
Yeah, until the, the south side, the approach washed out to where they couldn't get across.
Many times we've, and I don't know if it's true for this, and I think I heard it, that um, there was blockades put up and they were removed by. Locals or people that wanted to cross it.
So when they, when they closed it back years ago, it was because of bridge planes. They closed it till they temporarily, till they got new plants. Then they reopened it, but it was like a. Two-ton limit or something. So that's the reason they wanted to close the thing because. You know, pick up with a load of wood is gonna. So they put the barricades up and then yes, people were moving them, but. The access part of it, I think is pretty simple. There is a low water crossing with Andy Farms back there. And I wanna say forty-five years ago, the five people that were involved in that. All agreed to make this low water crossing and it would be on Dolores Bunn's. Which at the time was Harold Masters. And. So those five guys all agreed to do that. And the county actually, road department actually went in and cut the banks back and made the low water crossing. Well, that's what everybody then used, cause the bridge was too narrow to get equipment across anyway. And then getting in bad shape. So everybody used that. Then the person that farmed it before Andy did, started farming. Uh. Closed everybody off. The problem back when the, when the county did that is they should have went ahead and got the easement. From Harold Masters. Cause he's the one that, that's great, go ahead and do it, you know, and. An agreement with all of them. Everybody involved, including Betty's dad. And uh. But they failed to do that. So there's actually no easement. And my suggestion would be, and I don't know what Andy thinks. But they need to get a hold of Dolores and see if the county could. Buy an easement from her.
That's not gonna happen. I already discussed it. We already, Joe, I think called me about it. You know, that they're not interested in that, only because it goes so far out of the farm and comes back. If they could do something maybe close the water, you know, where the bridge is, you know, they're not against that, but you know. The problem you get into with that is you give that easement, but you don't know, just like you said, whoever's gonna end up with that ground up there. What they're gonna wanna do with it. Somebody ends up with Jerry's farm and decides to put a quarry in there. Well, then. That easement allows dump trucks and everything to start going about there, you know. We're great with whoever needs to come across there. Right now, you wanna mean to as far as put an easement there, that's, it wasn't so far around to the farm, you know what I mean? Or if it was. Um, some of it wasn't farmable, but you know, that's something we've discussed and that's just further than they wanna go with it, so. My, my biggest thing, so in, you know, late eighteen, two thousand nineteen, obviously there was uh, enough of a concern about. Getting this bridge fixed so that people would have access that you want as far as hiring engineer to do plans. And I even received a, a thing in the mail wanting to sell like. Like five hundredth of an acre or something. It was very, very, very fractional acre so they could do, you know, the two project and. I don't know if I have to record, but I'm pretty sure I sent that back and you know, said, yeah, hey, I'm okay with that. Um, and uh, then it just kinda died. Um, and you know, of course I was much later than this, this whole, you know, easement project. So even after. You know, that, that crossing was made by the county, how remaining, you know, years ago, obviously there was a need here, just, you know, I guess it's been five years now ago. And everybody's like, hey, we do need to look at this. And then I got, you know, dropped, I guess from, from financial.
I would have to say, since I was on, only one that was on the board at that time, um. It was basically misrepresented, maybe the need. That was supposed to be there and the scope of what the project would be. Uh, at first it was just gonna be a simple low water crossing and, and it, it grew exponentially into a. Uh, multi-cube, um. You know, two hundred and forty thousand dollar project and also, um, it was discovered that. Uh, uh, it was presented that there was no way in or out for any of the neighbors and it was unfarmable. There was, and then we, when we actually. Got information, it's all that, you know, all the ground has been farmed. Uh, and people were getting in and out, people were accessing this uh, crossing that you was talking about here. It's like. Um. The board said, well, it's basically, it's kinda like nothing that we were told is completely true. So. And when the price tag come in, it's like, whoa, this is. Not what we were led to believe it would be.
From, from my standpoint, at that time, you know, I just saw it as a project that looked like it was moving forward. I mean, they went as far as, you know, to. To have me sign off on documents to, to sell a very small fraction piece of land and I had received those documents and then, you know, just died. Uh, until that meeting about six and a half months ago, I wasn't even aware of, you know, the, this crossing that was open to, it sounds like. Everybody's using, I didn't know about it. I was still using the bridge until they took it out, uh, well, until it, until the hole, the other side was made too big to cross it, but uh. Yeah, so that was all new to me as of. Six and a half months ago.
I would suggest that, like Pat, get ahold of that family. And approach them about an easement. Because.
I'm here on behalf of the family. You can call them if you want. They're gonna tell you the same thing. I operate here now, but. They're absentee, they can't be here and we just got the in detail. We have no problems with any adjoining landowners. Using it, you know what I mean? To get done what they need to do, but you know.
Can we go across it right now?
Yeah, so you had a problem with Mike and that was all understood, why you couldn't have thought so. Um, give her all of there. You know, that deal there, I'm gonna work with whoever there is there.
Can we, can we go across it now?
You want to, but I mean, it's gonna be.
Don't you have a plan of it?
Yeah.
But you don't mind if Jeremy goes across it?
Well, when it's planned within reason, you know, the uh, kid up on top of the hill on the other side takes all of his grain out of. But he doesn't travel down the crops and, you know, to get his grain out, mine is out. You know, that's just courtesy of that agreement.
So, so what, what I have going on is something that's year round. It's not. Prop season specific. So getting in and out after crops wouldn't be, um. And I'll just be straight with you. After you guys, I've remade the commission, nothing happened. The hunter that I had leased out there, he quit. He said he's out, he's not, he's done with a, had a three-year lease with them and he's done. He didn't pay me, he left and. Gave me that, but he's, and, and, and that's not, it's not, it was because of access. He lost his access and he was upset about it. And, and in turn, I'm, you know, I'm not exactly thrilled either, cause I mean, that's, that's money coming out of my pocket.
No, I understand. So I think this is a really great example, um, to Roger's point of things that. Come to us, right? And everybody used to get a, like, used to be able to work it out and then when. You change hands and different things, situations change, right? So we have to figure out what the best. Long-term solution to allow people to have access to their land, regardless of who owns it. Am I, am. Am I correct of, I mean, the, the Fishers, for example, when we look at this, right now it's working because. The Fox, it's, it's good, right? You're, you're, you're going across there. But if the Fox sells to the Twins and we're like, no, you're not, right? Then there's an issue. So we gotta, we gotta be mindful of all of that and go back to. What are our options? Um. I don't know, like to me, when I'm looking at this, tell me if I'm wrong, cause you know the maps better than, than I do, but either Grandeur Road. North and east to connect would allow Fishers. And I don't even know if that was ever went north. Or a stru- or a structure back where we took the bridge out, whether it's a low water crossing or. What the, what the options are.
Explain low water crossing. I didn't see what was originally done, but there was obviously some tubes you mentioned put in there for low water crossing. The reason that. Needs to be done, if you look at the hill from the south side, it is already steep coming down. It flattened out for the bridge approach. Considerably. If you're gonna put a little rock crossing here, you're gonna take all that out and go to the bottom of that creek, you're gonna make it. A heck of a mountain to come up.
That was, and thank you for reminding me, that was another concern at the time too, that that was. I believe it was a four culvert structure.
Yeah, at least six feet.
Yeah, I, it's, it is a huge amount of water comes down there. It was. It was costly for a reason.
Sure, but that's also part of the reason you make that south side. You know, so steep if you just wanted to go into the creek to make a, you know, a little water crossing, you cross through the water when it was low. And that'd be completely dangerous. The crossing I have, when we go across it with. The grain carts and stuff are short little banks and it's already mu- too muddy for us half the time to make several trips and then. It is not nearly as steep as what that would be. So, so that's why that might be so expensive in order to make it remotely usable, I would assume.
I'm not following you.
I just didn't know if Grandeur. Nor on that.
Well, I don't know. We haven't really gone through and looked at that.
Okay.
Uh, because up to this point, nobody has said, and we're not looking for work to do, but. To this point, nobody has said, hey, take a look and see what that would take.
If I may. I did look briefly into Grandeur and what the actual. Right of way we have now only goes another quarter of a mile north. That has not been vacated and I need, and I wanna put forward at this time that all this right of way I was talking about earlier between sections twenty-three and twenty-six. Has no record of vacation anywhere either. But.
Where's the, what'd you say, the Grandeur Road? Is that your talk?
Yeah, it'll be on the west side there.
Many, many, many years ago, I walked all through that area and it seemed like there was like a road up there, where it was just farm access road or whatever. Then it kinda just dies off.
Right now.
Is that where it kinda ends there? Okay.
And there used to be a pond right up there.
Is that all?
No, that's down, no, that's down at the bottom.
Oh.
That other field at the end.
You talking about here?
No, go down.
Yeah, they're looking at another fisher.
So there's nothing going north.
Right, right, right.
Do you have to be a road there, do you think? That's what I thought.
That's what I was wondering.
You still have to get, how do we get up?
Even if you take this road to here, is there a road that goes, uh, an open road that goes from here back over to here?
As I remember seeing that there was an easement that went from um. Uh, the Fishers east to that.
I thought so too.
I, I, I don't think so. I think the Fishers.
The only thing that I had that was going east is.
Shape, so there's.
The actual parcel, the actual parcel has a fifteen-foot extension.
But that doesn't extend across Fishers forty acres.
No.
Okay, so even if you can extend Grandeur down there and that doesn't help in my situation.
Fifteen foot's pretty skinny.
And that's not a.
Grandeur to the north, that gets to the, the corner of their forty, but there's still a quarter mile there that doesn't connect for.
Right, there's a half mile that don't connect or half.
Yeah.
Is it half mile? Cross forty and then another forty.
There's, right now, there's a half a mile of road that doesn't exist. I'm saying that the county road record has an additional quarter mile going north, but it obviously isn't built.
Bud Garrett's taught a easement, this fifteen-foot easement from that corner to the.
Right. From Harold Masters.
Well, I guess two things that I think. That solve both people's problems is either figuring out a way to cross Rollins where we remove the bridge or are we able to? Put a road or acquire right of way to do a road north and east. Or acquire right away to do a road north and east to connect to where Sluts Bomber and Fisher have a way to their. Their property, but also being mindful of. Your farming right now, Fisher property. And whatever structure we put in probably won't allow for your equipment, right? So there has to be. I mean, the bridge that we took out, you couldn't have taken equipment across there, right? So, so you're still gonna have the problem if it changes hands and and people don't agree. Uh, you're still gonna be landlocked unless we find you a way.
I'd say maybe I ought to approach folks and see if you can get easement from them for your property. You know them very well, you can talk to them, they're right here local.
That doesn't help Jeremy.
Well, and I'm talking about their property, I'm not talking about Jeremy's, but you know what I mean?
Low water crossing or something, that's such a tough bank.
The reason they went up there where they did is because it's solid rock marked.
I hate to point it out, but in Jeremy's, does the land is also classified as wasteland? Does that make any difference?
Um, that doesn't mean it always be what it's my info. For what it's worth, I had a reach after the meeting I had with you guys, I actually went to the uh. Appraiser's office and I asked them to reclassify because I lost access to it, so at that point they reclassified it, so it wasn't that until then. If you wanna give me access to that, I'll be happy to go back to the appraiser and say reclassify it back so I can pay more taxes on it again. Yeah, I, I thought you had it up there, that was not wasteland, that is now wasteland because I can't access it.
I really, I was, I thought it was all timber and classified as wasteland.
No, it wasn't.
How long has it been since it's been farmed?
Would, so wasteland has a different classification than than timber and grassland if if they explained it to me the the way that I understood it.
It it does, the state went through a. A big change in what was wasteland. I wanna say in. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Uh, because there were a lot of lands classified as wasteland. And they changed at that point, said that tree cover was no longer wasteland.
It's recreational.
So, well, how did it classify as wasteland then?
What's uh?
Under what category?
It's wasteland is just a different, is is just a different category altogether, it's called wasteland. And it values the land at ten dollars an acre, if I'm correct, ten dollars an acre. Uh, and their point was that the state classifies most wasteland and that. Hey, well, you got the appraiser here, she could explain to it better, better than I, but I do know we went through an awful lot of reclassification. Uh, when Department of Revenue started working that over.
Probably about sixteen or seventeen, cuz I remember there was a lot of land that went and i- if it had a fence around it, it basically became pasture. Uh, whether it was woodland or, uh, you know, and so that's what I was just. Wondering then what classified it.
Yeah, and most of this occurred out of a Kansas Supreme Court decision. Uh, uh, in Sumner where a judge ruled that if. Uh, if most, if most of the land was wasteland, then the rest couldn't be agricultural. And I think that that's what stimulated this movement across the state of Kansas, it wasn't just Atchison County, this was. The state of Kansas moved. Am I speaking out of turn? Okay, I'm good. She was gonna say you're out of line.
Much of that excess.
It did fire people up because we had some full rooms talking about it. It was just. The changes that they told us we had to go through.
Right.
So to Jack's point of that quarter mile grandeur going north, is there a possibility for us to? Talk to the landowners to extend the road north and then east over to connect. And do a cost analysis of that versus replacing the bridge, cuz those seem to be the only two options that we have, right? To give both parties access and not have to worry about this in the future, so. I'm, I'm just asking. On the process of opening a road and adding a road to your.
It would, I would like to look into that because one thing about it, then you wouldn't have the upkeep, because even a new. Uh, structure in fifteen to twenty years with the amount of water that comes down that that creek, we're gonna. It will wash out sometime, it will be a problem and plus there's the the hill on the south that will be roading into it. Um, that is a very deep hole and um. I mean, if that other way is feasible and and I would be much more in favor of, I think. Knowing what I know now to to come in that direction than than a structure in kind of creek.
Well, I think. When we have that process of what it looks like in the costs versus a new bridge structure, I mean, either way, we're solving both parties that have issues. At for access, we're solving their problem by giving them access, so. One way or another, well, actually, the road solves fishers. So really, the road is the best option for both of them. Grandeur going north also.
Grandeur, you're, you're talking about going a half mile up and a half mile over.
Which Jack said, I think a quarter mile is already.
It's not, it's not built, it just has unvacated. Right away record.
Okay.
You can drive a.
We can take a top graphic analysis of it and just see what it looks like. And probably give something back to you, well, give something. To Joe to give back to you at that point.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the whole reason for this process. And so as we, we, Roger, mainly, we bring this to everyone. What we have and then you as the commission directs us on what you want us to do. And then we know where, what direction we need to go in.
Having this information is huge, it's wonderful.
We gathered a lot of information.
I'm not, um. Don't wanna say all the legalities of it, but it's my understanding right now that part of that path that you guys are creating doesn't currently have an easement. For roads, so you'd actually have to obtain easement for that then from other landowners, is that an accurate statement?
I think we have to figure it out first, what is there?
The old records, I mean.
Well, from what I understood, he says that there is a road record showing that.
Only a quarter mile more, so only half of what you just pointed out.
Okay, so yes, we have the pain right away. And then we don't have any right of way going east west, right?
Not what I'm aware of, so.
Right, well, right. Yeah, from there, it's only. Landowner digger into it, or can you force it further than that if you wanna make it a road? You know?
Well, it it's, yeah, I mean, there's possibility of eminent domain, but we've got. I mean, we're talking about using eminent domain, but we've never even talked to people about what.
We're just seeing if that's, you know what I mean, what it's just curious that's gonna get into, you know what I mean? Um, I can't just go to them and say, we're gonna open the roads, you have to give us, you know, thirty feet, they've gotta agree to it or.
I might, might remind you that on grandeur. There is a tremendous hill to come about of. I mean, both ways, actually. And it has a little water crossing in it.
What is the other creek like going through Malt's property?
Depends on the day, some days, right now, there's probably normal flow of water, which is. Yeah, it's. There, there's a nice flow, it varies from two feet wide to four feet wide, um. Two to five inches deep probably, um, whenever we get a lot of rain, though, it can fill up and when we get really dry, sometimes it dries up.
It comes on Roger Coddles Pond. This word still works.
So the road's down on the east side of Roger's Pond, is that right? Uh, Tyler's not here, I think he does have at times a small crossing for himself, he brings all of his grain out. Now through our crossing, I don't know what's there, it's nothing fantastic. It's, it's a better way for him to come down through across us.
We could stay on the section lines depending on the topography, I think that's the best route to go, I mean, rather than cutting up through someone's.
But that going north from Harbor Rock, that's technically still all open. Correct, you wouldn't have to, if you tried to go that way, you wouldn't have to get easements from people or.
It goes straight all the way through.
Yeah, that's what I mean, Rollins Road, the rest of Rollins Road that we're not talking about, still technically an open road. Correct?
It's never been vacated, we showed that the records still have it, but it, it's not currently. What's that?
Really? So they would connect.
Was dedicated and still exists. But no longer has a uh travel pathway. And and we do know that if we go this way, uh, that you are gonna have another some sort and and you all are gonna know better than I.
Well, it's not nearly the creek that the other one is, I don't know what it is, Jeremy may not know better than me. That is technically still an open road, so I guess if you were going over on the other one and you're having issues getting easements and stuff. Maybe you come back and look to that, cuz.
You already have a legal right. Do a right of way through there.
Uh, just what's on my property, I know that it's, it's rough, it's to call, I don't know how it was a road, I didn't. I, I didn't know it was a road back there, but I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but there's, there's some.
Oh, that can happen in a hundred years.
I'm surprised at the configuration of the uh property lines there that that road was. There, we're talking about Rollins and then. That long slim piece being, I guess there's another long some piece next to it, but that's not the usual property division lines. There's a lot of funky ones to the right.
Well, and and the records that Jack is expressing, it was all composed to be vacated at one point in time. Because all the records show that the use did not justify the expense of keeping it open. And there was a lot of argument and at the last moment then, uh, according to what I read is it didn't. And so, which means right of way still exists.
Oh, yeah, basically three options for us to do cost analysis and determine a path forward. Either grand or north. And east over to Rollins, seventeenth north all the way to Rollins or the bridge and the bridge structure that would all. Have to be considered, so we have homework and at least some. Options to put some numbers together to determine. But this is good because these are the problems that you explained to us that land on your lap that. Right now it's fine cuz everyone's getting along, but like, let's figure out how we don't have to do this in the future, right? Of like. It's good. All right, well.
So, you wanna, what all do you wanna us to explore?
Maybe it's be an investigation on those routes to see if it's feasible, need somebody. Uh, if there's right away possibilities on there and then what would it? Take to um. How much would it cost to to get a travel? There, we're talking about dirt road, I suppose. Yeah, minimum maintenance road.
So, let me ask this. Do you want me to have someone like Husker Steele look at a structure across the.
Would it be less than the? Low water crossing?
Do we know how far can we use? Like, I didn't know the other, well, you got those other quotes on.
This would be.
But I mean, yeah.
It would be more than what the low water crossing would be, the next.
I can't answer that without that.
I, I, I've always envisioned that, I mean, that's the reason that a low water crossing is looked at.
The low water crossing, I agree, same way with you. You can't put those big six foot tubes in there, in the amount of water that comes in there without there being. Uh, in my opinion, be some quite a bit of maintenance.
Yeah, here, here's the problem and I'm, I'll just explain this, the problem with a low water crossing, it sounds like a great idea cuz then when the water is. Flowing normally, uh, the water can all flow through the tubes and if it floods, it can go over the top, the problem is when it goes over the top. It's generally arched and you're driving across the top of it, when that water starts flowing over the top, it's like an airplane wing. And that water lifts that concrete all up and when it does, it breaks it all up and then it goes away and so. You find yourself replacing those low, low water crossings a lot. We had another one that we did that with down on.
Off two thirty four.
Yeah, and and it was the same, same way, now that one, we cut a lot of corners on. You get an engineer involved, they're gonna do a, a big plan and you're gonna end up working with all of the stuff. If you're just saying, hey, we're replacing something. That's already there, then you go in there and you, you know, you're duct tape and baling wire kind of thing, you can get by for a lot less money, but. But again, uh.
CFS wanted ten thousand dollars, remember, to draw up a set of plans, new plans compared to the old ones.
So to answer your question, I would be in favor of knowing what a bridge costs because if we're comparing what the best route is. On a road or a bridge, like, you have to have the information to make the decision. That's my, my stance is.
All right, well, we'll investigate our options. See what we come up with.
So, we will get some info together and then report back and. See what the solutions are and which one makes sense.
With no commitment, because we have no idea what, yeah, what, what we're gonna find, I mean.
Okay, so. Next one. Um, Loganman Road. That was the one we talked about was um marketed or advertised on for sale with an address.
Michelle will put it up on the board.
And we were wa- we walked away wondering, was the address, how was the address issued? Cuz we had it as US seventy three.
There is no address issue. And and this happens all the time, people just dream up an address and start using it, the fact is, it has not happened.
You actually worry about this?
Uh, not that, not to me anyway.
I don't know where the question originated.
Uh, it came to my attention simply because somebody called and asked. Oh, Joe, if you would rock it or mow the grass.
Mow the grass, and then it was brought up, I think, Casey, didn't you see where that piece of ground had sold?
Yeah, and we were talking about all these roads of how do you access the property and we walked away that morning at the workshop and you were like, send me that info, we need to look into this. So, just following up on what we found out.
And the only thing I had was I had, just happened to find in the pit, and we were talking about it and they were concerned about that little piece that. They wanna maintain, you know, you did.
That we, we gravelled it this last week. From the church east south to their driveway, we didn't land over the hump and the.
No.
You know, the.
I know one thing, yeah, right up there to the north, I drove down there the other day. Where the house, the foundation is on the east side of the road and I was looking at. This property and there's a ditch about that deep, about, I ran into it in my car, so. And you hit the same thing.
My van was low and I was like, that's been the first, oh.
I was doing one of these drive by infection, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So what I'm gonna do for this one is the same I just did for the last one, I'm gonna tell you what I found. So I researched from, researched this segment from two seventy seconds south. That is two seventy second, right? I wrote the right number. So this road was established through petition to the Board of County Commissioners. As road one forty nine in eighteen seventy and it still has that legal standing as a county road. In nineteen sixty six, the road was relocated for construction of US Highway seventy three. And portions of it were changed to a frontage road, um, can you zoom back out, please? So this road obviously is falling into disrepair, a fence was installed, a gate. Limiting access to the state right of way portion of the road. Uh, the fence wasn't installed with anyone, anyone of. The fence was not installed to the knowledge of anyone with the county, we don't know who put it there or why. So, this is all the record I have. For the county, how do you wanna move forward on this one?
The state right of way. Comes to here over and then jogs down. And then over and back and gone down through and so. The county road still existed to this point. And then they. And then they, it's called on the plans and called a frontage road down through this area, leading to this to this property. Now, it's a little different configuration here, uh but. There has been a fence there that's had it blocked off, so although that is all the case, no one's used it. Uh beyond this point, and this drive down in is serving this, this and this property. Uh but that doesn't have any legal standing that I know of. And this gate being blocked off here, uh all you had was this property, which nothing really been going on with that property for years. Uh and and so nothing had happened from here on down, and so that is a status.
So at the corner up there where that house burnt down, where we stopped, right, that's where it stops, it's the county. From there south to the gate and then the state from the gate south to the property.
Again, who is responsible for maintenance, we don't know. All we know is that, uh and and again. I keep going back to two thousand and twelve because that was my first existence with all of this process. Uh that's when we really started compiling the database of all the roads and records and things. To say who was taking care of what, and just like with the townships, we only know what they tell us that they were doing. And that's what we put on everything. Uh there are a lot of roads which exist out there that no one has and a lot of roads that. That a lot of no roads that people do have that are they're taking care of, but that portion. Uh we had labeled as uh county road, but we had nothing else associated with it. We don't know what the state would have maintained.
We're basically on the head of county road because a township wouldn't claim it. If that's not, if that's accurate.
Well, I mean, if it's on there, we dedicated it as a township or county road, isn't that our call?
But I hope I said correctly, Roger. Where it stops, it turns into state right of way, correct? So wouldn't that be a question the state would have to answer on whether. You know, I don't know that they just let roads be on their right of way wherever.
It's a reasonable question and I just don't know the answer.
So they would they would have to get a hold of them, though.
So we're talking about this property being for sale down here at the end of that gate?
This property. It's not for sale, it's sold, I think.
Do we have any indication, is that, are they talking about putting a house there or are they talking? Like development, because that would be the big thing, is if somebody was gonna develop for homes, I mean, then your. Road is completely inadequate, versus, I I just wondered what the status was or if there's been any indication of what. But nothing.
I have, I, all my conversation on this has been with.
Okay, so it could be we're just anticipating something more than.
Well, I would guess that they're gonna have the same issue as the people who just left, they have no legal access to their property, but they bought it now. It just, Casey brought it to my attention and and we didn't, we just went through the process and. Roger and Jack did, and that's what they came up with.
We did get one problem solved, though, we. One property owner can get the gravel on the road. And you go from two seventy second down to their place and kinda get the whole thing in good shape.
Yeah, we rocked from the end of the asphalt up to where their driveway, from where their driveway starts. It didn't look like it needed any blading to me, and I had one of the guys come out there and I showed them where to. Where to lay the rock and they did and. Hopefully they're happy it needed to be done. That is most likely a drainage ditch, a concrete drainage ditch. There's a lot of those along the highway.
Alright, well. I can get ahold of the buyer and question what they're anticipating uses of the property. I just think, yeah, I. I think it's coming down the pipeline, but I'm not sure yet. So and the state has been. Working on it, but I don't wanna speak out of turn, cause that was not the cross street. That they at, they told me, so I wanna make sure he has his ducks in a row. That it's not farther south of what he was asking, and basically, he asked how the commission would look at it if. The state built it and then the county maintained the snow removal. But again, it was, I was driving on the phone and I was like. Yeah, Hegman. So I need to double check with him that it's not two seventy second south, not two fifty eight. So and again, he didn't have all his information, like he was driving, and so I asked him to send it to me, so he's supposed to be sending it this week. Because I said, well, I'd like information before I speak out of turn, and I'm one, so I can't tell you how anybody will feel.
Well, because I know. Of two seventy fourth where it comes off. I can see it as seventy fourth where it comes off seventy three, the first driveway going north. The state maintains that for snow removal, or at least they used to, probably why that question was asked. I know that if you look, the right of way marker is in there, you're. But that's just neither here nor there. As you can see there up, the driveway is up.
Well, when he sends me the info, I'll board it and we can see which one he's talking about. Cause it wasn't two seventy second, was not the street, he said, he said two fifty eight, which. That's further south and going to the east. No, this, I very much love this process of your sheet and the information. It's, this is incredible, this is awesome, so thank you for putting it together and being able to share this so we can. Discuss it and have it and everybody can look at it and understand what we have, what we don't have, what we need to have, right? And and move forward, um it just feels really cohesive and really good.
And the reason we started doing this is because you're gonna find the same roads will come up over and over. And when they do, then we can just dig the old record out and use it, rather than answering the question to six different people.
Well, this perfect, perfect example was the road we just discussed how. Well, it's fine, I'll let you, you know, and but then when that changes, we we have to, we have to get them set up for success in the future. No matter who owns what, right, of like, so.
That that also was a great example of why it's best to iron out the right of way problems at the time you're doing it than to put those off in the future.
Yeah, I think the vast majority of these are created by the people with good intentions. But, yeah, cause we've seen that in town, there were several things, but the state changed down through town in Denver, Sixth Street does the little curve and all that. Fifth Street and all that kinda comes together, that was a big mess, we had to deal with that. Did a bunch of survey and did a bunch of deep work, cause the state basically left a mess.
Just walked away and said, here you go.
Well, it sounded like the neighbors on the last property that we talked about had come together and were using that crossing and. And getting along, like I say, they didn't immortalize it and they. Everybody's getting along, everybody's here, then all of a sudden, oh, people get older and they don't realize that there's nothing there giving that land over the night. And that's too bad that that wasn't done. I commend them when they do get along and and reach those kinds of agreements.
Are you okay if we go into budget discussions?
I think we should do a bunch of workshop.
If you go to a workshop, is it already, I am here. In case you need to talk to me or.
Past few weeks, have we done workshop or we've just done open session?
I I would highly recommend workshop on this one, we've done workshop in the past, but often, and then. Discussion about it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause like the past few weeks since, since we got our, we've just continued on, so. I just wanna say thank you, cause even though we disagree on things, I appreciate not being. Read it like. I just, I. I know, I know, a hundred percent, and I give grace and I forgive a hundred percent, I just, it sounds. Okay, so Commissioner Reeve has recommended that we go do twenty twenty five budget discussion and workshop, are you okay with that? So I would look for a motion to um recess into twenty twenty five budget workshop. Uh with the sheriff and the finance director for revenue neutral rate notice discussion and approval to give to the county clerk. Until, I don't have a timeline, so we'll, until we get where we need to be, we'll do that. No, there was just one on there and it was included in the email, so I was, I just came down for that. The the motion to uh recess into budget workshop.
It was the one that was discussed last week. You prefer having the executive session versus doing the RFP.
I'm okay with that.
Well, yeah, that's one of the things I had talked to Pat about, cause I was wondering, it didn't feel like executive session.
I didn't know where that was going, so I said that.
Okay, yeah, because I was like, I don't think the discussion of RFP county counselor has anything to do with evaluation or. Performance or anything non-elected, so just wanted to make sure that was.
And that's where I thought we were headed, so that's why I was.
No, I don't think it has anything to do with it.
I moved to uh recess into the budget workshop. Second time.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Okay, we are back in open session, uh we gave. Um direction to the clerk for the R and R notice, um. We don't need a vote on that, but I think it's important that where we sit today. Um well, first of all, we talked about giving a three percent cola um to our staff, which equated to another three hundred and sixty thousand. Um which puts us about three million over the R and R, um which is sixty two point four seven four of a mil rate. Um however, it was determined um that. Do you guys wanna lower it to fifty seven mils, which would be one point six million of cuts, correct? Okay, um I think that we, as much as I hate. Tax increases, um it's very evident it is what it is at this point, and the past two years have caught up with us. Um so I am not in favor of lowering it, however, um we don't need a vote, so I just wanted to. Come out of that discussion and and share that.
I think that that to me is worst case scenario, and hopefully we can find even more, so.
I would agree.
I mean, I I I realize it's it's gonna be higher, but. And I don't know what scenario we're gonna do, cause there's other things that have not been decided, so that could greatly affect it.
So I have a purchase order um from emergency management um for an emergency management ID card equipment. An amount of forty two hundred dollars, I have a motion to approve.
And that's kinda out of Arfa?
Yeah, out of Arfa, sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. This might be being the unfinished business, so we have noticed to taxpayer, we have delinquent real property notices. The county's delinquent on our taxes. Pat, is this something you were gonna cover with us? Or?
They were um, they were out there and I believe Connie basically ran the. Notices and brought them.
Okay.
This from tax of properties.
Potentially, I don't know.
Twenty twenty three, oh, Carney Street, one oh six north, sixteenth, six. And North Sixth Street. Delinquent.
I think those are. Two dollars and eighty four cents. I taxed you at two dollars and eighty four cents.
You could live on this trip of like.
Set a tiny home and be a skinny tiny home.
It's probably a better use of your time, like, we give you a presentation on it next week, I'm trying to look each of them up right now, and this one is.
I've never seen him before.
I think these other three most likely are the properties that didn't sell from the last tax sale. And you can in August, the end of August, you could offer them for sale.
County Council updates?
I don't have any.
Um no need for executive session, do I have a motion to approve this week's expenses? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Um public comment, the none, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero, we're gonna adjourn at two forty five. Just change one minute.